April twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, special meeting of the Malibu City Council. On account of the, if you want to speak to the council, let me give you some ideas of how you can do that. On account of the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic, this meeting is being held in a hybrid format. That allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom webinar. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak forum to our city clerk sitting over here on our right. Remote participants, if you would like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting. Print it on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak on is called. Kelsey, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Grisanti.
Here.
Councilmember Riggins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Protem Yurin.
Here.
Mayor Silverstein.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Very good, thank you. Lead us in the course of Pledge of Allegiance, if you would, Lloyd. Okay. Kelsey, can we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April twenty first, twenty twenty three.
I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second motion.
Kelsey, agenda, or roll call, please.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti.
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Yurin.
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. As we did in the prior meeting on Monday, we've got two of our city council people that are coming in from offsite, so they will be. Kelsey and our, my co-pilots here will be taking care of them to make sure we get everybody a chance to speak. So Kelsey, if anytime I screw up, you let me know, we'll fix it, okay? Thank you very much. All right. We'll now move to hear item one A, the proposed budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Please raise your hand in Zoom if you would like to speak on this item or you will be called on after the staff report. And if you want to speak here, you can submit a speaker slip to the, Kelsey. So could we get a staff report on this item, please?
Yes, honorable mayor and members of the city council, Mayor Protem Yurin. We will present on the overall budget and then we'll have departments present as well. But tonight's workshop is the first draft of the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four proposed budget. And this is really the first of four times that is, that this is in front of the council or a subcommittee. We hope to get some feedback and direction from you tonight. And I would be remiss if I didn't give a huge, huge thank you to Renee Neearman. I can't describe just how much she really does behind the scenes and how much she did to pull this together, so thank you, Renee.
Joe, very quick question, how many, there's a A and F meeting taking place on Monday, I guess, right?
Tuesday.
Or Tuesday to deal with this, I'm just saying, if people wanted to have a chance to comment on this, they can go to the A and F meeting. Where, where does it go after that? Will they have other opportunities from there on in?
Yes, absolutely, and you're getting just a bit ahead of me, but. They'll be able to come at the A and F meeting, which is May second. If that meeting goes too long, it's going to be adjourned to May fourth. There will also be a public hearing in May, I believe that's May twenty fourth. And then final council adoption towards the end of June.
Okay, I apologize for interrupting you, thank you very much.
It's, it's okay. And then also I want to give you a quick orientation to the budget and for listeners out there, so when we refer to actuals, we're referring to the prior year that has been closed or any prior period that's been closed. So those are final numbers and actual numbers. When we refer to the adopted budget, that's truly talking about the current fiscal year. When we talk about revised adjusted numbers, those are usually referring to the current adopted budget. But it's the adopted budget that the council has made changes to throughout the year. And then when we discuss the projected, it's also often referred to as the estimated budget. This is where the current year is being forecasted out to the end of June thirtieth. And then the proposed budget is next year's draft buzz budget as proposed to council, which will eventually turn into the adopted or could eventually turn into the adopted budget. So next slide, please. So tonight's overview, we, normally we would touch on the city council work plan, but as you know, we started off doing some strategic workshops. We got through our first one last week. And we hope to have another one scheduled here in a few weeks, so we don't have an updated work plan yet to go over. But that is in formulation and that'll be happening concurrently with the budget process. But we will go over tonight, the budget development process and the calendar, we'll touch on a summary of revenues and expenditures. We'll talk about our status with the fund balance. And then we'll also have departments present on their budgets and give an overview of what's going on with them. And then we'll close it all out and provide a summary and what our next steps are. So next slide, please. So internally, we kick off the budget in February, and actually this year we did it right at the end of February. That's a very short timeframe, our goal is to actually kick it off much earlier next year. Probably around December or January to give departments a little more time and to have a little more strategic analysis of the budget and suggestions. But for now, we are in February, it's a short, compact schedule. We then go through March, trying to formulate the budget, we also open up the general fund grant app, application, excuse me, application process. And then in April, where we're at now, we do more budget development and pull it all together, present it now in the workshop format. And then in May, we have the first A and F, which will be another review of the budget. And then the A and F will go through the general fund grants, all those applications that were submitted. We'll also have the public hearing at the end of May. And then in June, hopefully the council will adopt the budget. Next slide, please. So these are our overall revenues and expenditures, so these are all funds, all funds, we're at about ninety six million. You can see that our biggest component is the general fund, that's almost fifty five million, more than half of the budget. And then special revenue funds are about thirty six million. And then we have some other items in there. And on the expenditure front, which is about a hundred and seven million, again, the general fund makes up the biggest component. Of note, there's about eleven point seven million in general fund capital included in there, so less the capital, the general fund. Program expenditures are fifty five point six million, which we'll get to on the next slide. And then special revenue expenditures are thirty four million, so that's the overall view from a pie chart perspective of our budget. Next slide, please. Our general fund revenues and expenditures, so our total revenues are about fifty four point eight two million or fifty five million. Our biggest components of our revenue are property tax, transient occupancy tax and sales and use tax. The T O T and sales tax are in the other taxes category, and that's about twenty three million or forty seven percent of all revenue. We did make significant adjustments at the second quarter of this fiscal year, so we mostly kept our revenues flat going into twenty three, twenty four. Because we did have a lot of upward growth that we were seeing. But we are conservative going into next year, but we did add a modest growth to property tax, about two and a half percent growth. And then sales tax will experience a full year of the new half cent transactions and use tax or T U T increase. And talking to our sales tax consultant, there could be a recession, so we think our baseline sales tax may drop, but with the T U T added on top, on top of that, we're estimating a net increase of about two million overall. To about eight million in sales and use tax, or in sales tax. And then on the expenditure front, we have about fifty five point six million in expenditures. Our biggest are by department is management and administration. It's fifteen million, public safety, fifteen million. And then you can see the other components, environmental sustainability, about eight million, planning, almost six million. Public works, five, and community services, also five. Next slide, please. Now, on the first page of our staff report, we wanted to touch on the difference between what's in the general fund expenditures, but what's truly our ongoing or what we would consider part of our structural budget. We touched on the expenditure side, but we failed to mention the one time or designations on the revenue side, so we'll clarify that in the staff report for A and F. But I wanted to put a slide up that shows you really where we're at, so you see what our structural balance is. We're using a very manual budget process, which is pretty labor intensive. And so we also have a lot of longstanding budget schedules, so we did do some shifting. To better align where transfers and expenditures are to more accurately reflect where they are. It didn't have a change in how. The budget was or what the actual general fund was, it's just a different display of it. But that also made it a little more difficult to kind of see where our ongoing expenditures are. So you can best see this on the schedule of fund balances, which is page I in the budget. But what, what we're showing is that our total revenue that I just mentioned in the previous slide, fifty five point eight million. There's some designations or transfers in there of about two point two million, so in, in actuality, our ongoing revenue is fifty two point seven million or fifty two point six five. And then on the expenditure front, we have fifty five point six million and overall general fund expenditures, but there's some one-time designations and transfers of about three point three million. Net to net of your sources, over uses or revenue over expenditures, that ends up with about a three hundred. And thirty thousand net general fund impact or a surplus of three hundred thousand. So we want to make that clear, but we are presenting a structurally balanced budget. And we believe it's conservative with the three hundred thousand dollar cushion. Next slide, please. So as you can see, our fund balances are very healthy, they continue to grow, there was a rapid growth over the last few years, the city did much better than anticipated through the pandemic. There was really no way to properly predict that, obviously, we cut expenditures, we were holding the line, and then. Sure enough, our revenues just kept growing and, and we didn't keep up with expenditures, so that's why there's been some growth in fund balance, although we do anticipate that leveling off going into next year. So next slide. So we just want to show you what those numbers are, so we closed fiscal year twenty one, twenty two with a seventy two point one million fund balance of that is fifty five point two, that's undesignedated, that's what you have the most discretion over. We are estimating to close this year with a ninety million, now that's a big increase, but a lot of that is designated or designed for capital projects, those sorts of things. So we are expecting some of that to be spent down going into the next fiscal year. So where you see where we're in, we'll, we'll end at seventy nine million, that's at least what we're projecting into next year. But that undesignedated amount would be sixty six point two million, and so that delta. Between where we're estimating this year to end and the growth into next year is about that three hundred thousand dollar difference that we were just talking about in the last slide. Or two slides ago, I will say that the projected sixty six point two million is about a hundred and nineteen percent of the general fund expenditures. That, those general fund expenditures, again, were fifty five point six million, so that's a healthy fund balance. And I also wanted to make the comment that we previously had ARPA funds, the American Rescue Act. So the city was awarded two point eight million in twenty one, twenty two, and we started an expenditure plan following the Treasury's interim guidance at that time. Subsequent to the city taking that action, which was a very proactive approach that many cities were doing. Subsequent to that, the Treasury came out with a final rule. And they allowed a standard allowance provision, which is sort of similar to a standard deduction. Allowing cities to claim up to ten million of revenue loss and then using those awards towards general government services. Meaning all of the two point eight million that we were awarded was eligible, they were eligible for general use. So as part of that original plan, we did have an actual use of about five hundred thousand, but the remainder we have now claimed under the standard allowance that ARPA provided. So in a roundabout way, that has resulted in a healthier general fund, undesignedated fund balance. Because we were able to apply those funds to ongoing expenditures. Next slide. So on the personnel front, our city is now going to be built of about a hundred and fifteen total F T E, those are full-time equivalents or full-time employees. That does not count the five council members, that would be a hundred and twenty staff members in total. We are adding four additional positions and information systems administrator and management and administration, which we'll touch on. An administrative assistant and planning, an assistant planner and associate planner. We're also adding two job specifications, these do not have any budget tied to them, they're just creating. The specs, but we could always come back to council to add the budget and the authorization. That would be a deputy public works director and an engineering technician, that will provide some flexibility to the department down the road. We have included a cost of living adjustment, we calculate that in February. In February, that is a five point one percent increase with a total impact of about six hundred and forty thousand. So that will be applied to all positions. And the CalPERS rates are increasing. We will be coming back with a resolution to modify our existing resolution that has a cap on the percent, but. You may recall that we cover a hundred percent of the purse classic employees, we believe that is a very healthy incentive for employees to stay with the city. So we don't want to lose that, so we're going to adjust that resolution. And then the purse pepper amount is increasing to eight percent. And those are the newer employees that were hired after twenty thirteen. Next slide, please. Oh, and actually, if you could go back, there are a couple more comments I wanted to mention. And, and one thing we, we haven't put in yet, but we do intend to come back on, the city manager intends on returning with an undetermined amount for enhanced employee incentives. So obviously, the budget has the cola, but we do want to explore other opportunities that might be incentives for employees. Recruitment and retention is huge, and you'll hear that theme throughout tonight. But of course, we're conducting a class and comp study, now that doesn't necessarily mean everybody would get a raise, but that does ensure we have appropriate job specifications and are competitive. And we want to be in the top tier when we talk about being competitive. And of course, salary is one component, but there's many other facets that retain employees, which really comes down to feeling like we're doing something meaningful and purposeful in our work. That we like our teams and we have a positive culture and there's a work-life balance, which are all things we want to attain and strive for. Next slide, please. We'll touch on this later and, and you'll focus on this in the A and F meeting next week, but there have been twenty two applications so far, organizations with applications for general fund grant dollars. In total of five hundred and fifty six thousand. Excellent. So department changes and want to comment that these variances are looking at the total budget or all funds, and we're really describing the difference between fiscal year twenty two, twenty three adopted. Which is, which are on our schedules and our schedules, like I said, are, are old, so there's some nuance to it. Those columns on our schedules are actually the adjusted or revised for this proposed budget, but that's what we're comparing to where we're at now to what next year is going to look like. So these variances are only describing the most significant changes and may have some offsets. And later you'll go hear from departments, they'll discuss some of their supplemental requests. Which are specific ask above the status quo budget and may not directly tie to these changes from the prior year, but they should be close. So on, in a minute, oh, and one more thing, all the departments again got a five point one percent cola salary and benefit increase. We also modified the information systems cost allocation plan, we had, used to have a fixed rate for many, many years, so that had fallen out of alignment with what really should be charged. We were taking what the total charges for information systems and then spreading that across a per capita basis per department. And that would be considered an internal cost recovery plan, which is very normal in local government. And then, of course, other changes as, as are noted, so in management and administration, our increase is about six hundred thousand. In city manager department. In city manager department, we are adding the grant consultant. We also have left some placeholders in our professional services for diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. And also process improvement, those are things we would like to eventually get to and work on. In finance, we're increasing by about two hundred and twenty thousand, that is to hopefully build out our financial systems more. That includes our budgeting system, that includes some employee self service functions, timesheets, those sorts of things. We want to build those out more and then also accounting and reporting agreements that we have. Information systems, we are increasing that budget, we are looking to add an information systems administrator, that would be one additional F T E. That would be a position that can really support all the systems that we're looking to implement, try to help be a project leader on those. And then support systems that we have. City Hall, that program's increasing by about three hundred and forty thousand, we need to do a carpet replacement across city hall. There's a ton of other maintenance, just miscellaneous maintenance across city hall. And then we need to put in a fire suppression system in one of our server rooms. And for clarification, you need a a gas suppression system when you have I T equipment. And currently, we we don't have that in one of the server rooms, so we want to make sure we get that upgraded. And then some of that stuff is offset by in the non departmental program, which is really a catchall department. We have lower O P E V costs because we're fully funded, we are just going to continue to pay the normal costs that we need to pay. Instead of the increased pre funding, we had a high budgeted amount in the current fiscal year anticipating more. Pre funding, but we can lower that next year. And then we were also realigning some of our internal cost allocations, which I mentioned at the beginning, the information systems cost allocation. So that. You know, and in a roundabout way lowered the impact to the non departmental side now that it's recouping some of those costs. And then public safety, the the that one's pretty much that increase of about two point three five million. Is really tied to the sheriff contract and it's only an estimate at this time until that gets trued up and they adopt their budget. And then, of course, we're still working with the sheriff to determine how we want the substation to be staffed. So there's going to be more changes to come on the sheriff contract. Next slide. Community services, so that's going up about seven hundred thousand and same trend as last year, really increasing activity of all. All recreation activities returning to pre pandemic levels, so trying to ramp up to meet that demand. Also, an increase to skate park and general park maintenance, both of those maintenance areas are having increases as well. And I'm sure the department will comment on that. Similar similarly, environmental sustainability will definitely want to comment on some of their increases. But about two point two net change from last year. There's an increased demand from all the planning contract staff, the workload that that team has been producing is now having a ripple effect. On environmental sustainability to try to keep up with that demand. So at least for the general fund, there's a two million dollar increase to the professional services contract staff. And then there's another five hundred thousand for Woolsey Fire support. But the huge increase for the needed contract staff in environmental sustainability. Excellent. Planning has about a six hundred thousand dollar increase. They had a three year staffing plan that they started last year, they added three positions. This year, want to add another three positions, which we showed you earlier and they'll comment on. And then hopefully next year, looking to add another four positions. Of course, easier said than done, we can add the positions, but we got to make sure we can hire them and that's the hard part right now. So we're doing our best to recruit as much as possible, but the department will talk more about that strategy. And then public works has two hundred thousand dollar increase and this is really across all the programs. Not one significant thing, but street maintenance, increasing some of the street work, the yard rental and storm response are going up. Fleet operations, we are getting four new vehicles, but two of those are replacements. In engineering, nearly two hundred thousand dollar increase, looking to develop a green fleet policy. And then, of course, we mentioned the job specifications that we were going to add, a deputy director and an engineering technician. And so with that, we will get to and next slide, please. We'll get to the department presentations, we'll go in the order that they're presented in the budget. So we'll start with management and administrative services and public safety, community services, environmental sustainability, planning and public works.
Joe, before we get there, can we ask some questions about what you just covered?
Absolutely, you can interrupt anytime and you can do the same with the departments.
Okay. On page six of twelve. Of the staff report. There's a listing of project names there. And the one at the bottom, outdoor warning system design. Now, what is that? I mean, at one point in time, I thought we had funded some company to go out and and decide where the sirens should be placed. Is that is that is that what this is about?
I believe so. I will defer to either Susan or Rob might be able to comment on that.
Uh, yes, that is about the outdoor warning sirens is a project that we had funding from from FEMA. We're in the process of developing a plan. And I believe we're doing a joint meeting with the Public Works and Public Safety Commission next week. To talk about the location and pole size of those sirens.
Well, just and and just something we can talk about as you go through the rest, as I remember, okay, that's eight hundred thousand dollars, we had a grant to do that, right? Okay, as I remember, when this item came up in front of the Public Safety Commission. And when it came up in front of the city council, based upon the consultants who were doing the work. In both of those meetings, we were told that this thing wasn't going to work. That basically, if the San Ana winds are blowing, the stuff's in the, you can't hear anything, you know, it won't be able to. Sound won't get through to the houses and people, so just, I mean. Look, this is twenty twenty three, I'm flying helicopters on Mars. It seems to me that, you know, we should be able to do something for eight hundred thousand bucks. We should be able to come up with some kind of technology that we can put in people's houses that will alert them if there's a fire going on. Versus depending upon some technology that was built in World War Two, so just think about that.
No, that's that's part of the process, that's part that's part of the reason why we want to bring it up to a joint meeting with public works and public safety. Come up with different ideas and seeing if this is actually a viable solution moving forward.
Okay, yeah, because it's just, I mean, I just, I remember the planning commission, the public safety commission meeting and the city council meeting. And it really wasn't going anyplace. You see what else I had here, I had a bunch of stuff when I was going through it.
Mayor Protem, the mayor has raised his hand if you'd like to recognize him as well.
Mayor, if you have something to comment on, please do at the moment.
Sure, I I have one just very general question, well, specific question, but it's about this general discussion at the beginning of the staff report. It says here that the Woolsey Fire Recovery includes four point two million dollars of restricted funds. That I I don't know what that means, restricted, why are they restricted and what's the deal there? Could somebody explain that?
Yeah, restricted just means you actually do not have discretion over it, the council does not have discretion over it. Those are tied specifically to an event and I believe those were settlement funds from S C E.
Okay, but but why is that? If money was received by the city in a settlement of a lawsuit, how did that become restricted? Why is that not part of the general fund?
Mayor, I don't know what made those funds specifically restricted, probably have to look in that to get you a more definitive answer. But across government accounting.
Because I I'm not aware of the city council having adopted any resolution saying that. Money received by the wolf from the settlement was off limits for whatever use the city wants to make, the city council wants to make of it.
Right, Mayor, it it if the council had discretion over it or committed the funds, then you could have done that via a resolution. You would have committed it to a specific purpose, but if it's restricted, that means there's usually some legal or legislative binding. Tie to those dollars.
Trevor, are you aware of any legal restriction on the use of settlement funds from a lawsuit?
I'm not aware of one, but I'm happy to look into it.
I'd like to understand that, the the other thing is, you may have covered this, but I didn't really understand it. The the overall budget shows a eleven point four million dollar deficit. And then there's just a whole bunch of surpluses and some very minor deficit when you look at the various breakouts. So where's the eleven point four million dollar deficit come from?
Yeah, most of that is tied to capital, so a lot of that money is coming in via transfers or designations. And so it appear appears that we're spending more than ongoing, but really it's because some of that is coming out of already committed fund balances.
Well, if we're spending eleven point four million dollars more than we're receiving. Shouldn't that mean that our reserves in some matter reduced by eleven point four million dollars total?
And they are reducing a little bit, if you if you went back to that one slide, I apologize, I'm not sure which slide number it is. But you'll see that there was that huge jump in fund balances. And the designated component of our fund balance had increased a lot over the last couple of years. And then that is decreasing into next year as well.
Explain specifically what you're talking about. Oh, the ninety goes down to seventy eight, that's the eleven point four?
Correct.
Okay, fine, now I understand that. Thank you.
Yep.
Those are my questions, Steve.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments at this point, Paul? Doug, Mary, Doug?
Oh, wait, I'm going to wait until we get through the departments, we'll maybe cover some of the departments. But I I just have some general questions, maybe to tidy up at the end with Joe.
Mary Ann, anything on your side?
Uh, no, I'll wait till the end also, thank you.
The the only other thing I had when I, and I can't remember which slide it showed up on, but and for the finance department. We're doing some additional, I guess, development of systems to help that department out. You go back to that slide that Joe had. Financial systems build out, right?
Correct, so so we have a a system, I'm not going to name the vendor. But we have a financial system that we're using, but it's not fully built out. There's other components of it that we could use that I think would help build some efficiency in our department. We've wanted to get there, a lot of it is tied to our staffing resources to actually find the time to do it. But we do hope to build that out, one of it, one of them actually is doing an online budget, which would be a a change of how we've done it traditionally. So we started to use a new system. We had departments build out their budget a little bit this year and that we would need to further design that. So that into the future, it would be a much more interactive and transparent budget for the public. The public could actually interact with it online, download and print the budget directly from that. But it would create a lot more reports and be more user friendly. But that's the type of thing we want to do, there's also a payroll system that we want to build out. Also allow employee self service, so employees could interact with the system more directly, that would create some efficiencies for H R. So there's a lot of components to the financial system, we don't we don't have a full E R P system, but we do have a financial system.
And and I am, I have been a proponent of increasing our. Technology that we're using inside the city since I got on board in the planning commission, so I got no problem with that. My question is, is this a customized system we're dealing, are we building this on our own? Or is this a package we're buying that we're going to be, because if it's if it if it's a customized system, you may want to rethink that whole process, so.
Right, it's not, it's not fully customizable, it's mostly off the shelf and we're just looking to build out more of those components so we can use them.
Okay, cool. All right, back to you, Steve, I apologize, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, just a quick comment back on the schedule of fund balances and just to elaborate a little bit more on what Joe was saying. You know, the the big change there, as he noted, we, you know, we'd been building up in the general fund, the capital improvement projects. And so we've got a large amount, you know, there was eight point five million that were, you know, potential that we're asking to commit commit out of that. Towards capital improvement projects. So that's why if you look very at the at the top, if you're like if Roman numer, I at the very top on your general fund, undesigned fund. That's why you're really not seeing much of a difference in change there. Obviously, that's what we consider to be our our long term savings account there. So in this case, what we're essentially doing is spending down some of the capital that we have been accruing over the last couple of years. And while I had the mic, I I also wanted to thank our finance manager Renee Nierman for all her work on this. And also to our assistant manager, Joe Tony, I know they've been working, burning the candles at both ends to put this together. So thank you to them and all the staff on that. Also wanted just to quickly note that we do have, as just just stated, we're coming back with a public hearing for this. At the regular meeting on May twenty second. And then we have scheduled for the the adoption of the budget for the June twenty sixth regular meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Steve, thank you very much, any other comments? Otherwise, Joe's back to you.
Thank you for for that, we'll go into the first department, which fortunately enough is our department, management and administration. And I'll I'll give a chance for the slides to catch up, next next slide, there you go. So management administration is a very large department. Here listed the programs that are really just the operational programs, we also have some other ones like the debt service. Program, but these are really the functional ones. So obviously, we have city council, which carries out all the policies of the city, media operations. And and there's no way to capture what everybody does in a nutshell, there's so many, so much that staff does. But just try to give you a high level summary, media does all the communication, public relations, making sure our systems. For media and communications are running, producing the council meetings, all communication with the public. And again, media and social media. The city manager carries out all the policies and directives of the council and manages the organization. Legal counsel, although contracted, provides all the counsel for the city on behalf of the city. The city clerk administers the democratic process such as elections, city records, the council meetings and so much, much more. Finance, all the finances of the city, payroll, accounts payable, reporting, the act for this budget. And and really helping with all the management of our operations as well. H R does all the recruitment, helping with the selection, doing classification reviews, compensation, helping with performance evaluations. All the legal rules that pertain to personnel, there's a lot that happens in H R. Non departmental, that's really the catchall, it doesn't fall into a department, but then falls to us to administer and manage. Information systems, trying to maintain our network, trying to maintain our system so the rest of the city can function. Trying to protect us as well from cyber threats. And then city hall operations, making sure that all of our maintenance is up to date. Making sure our equipment and actual facilities are in in good standing. So we have a very healthy and active department. Next slide. So our total budget for management administration is twenty point two million. Our capital, we don't really have a capital project assigned to our department, but our capital outlay, this is like equipment and things we have about eight hundred thousand. Our general fund is fifteen point one million. And we have twenty six total personnel and then we did submit supplemental requests. And again, these might just be specific things that we asked for, that doesn't necessarily tie to what the change is from last year. But we submitted nearly a million dollars in supplemental requests and one F T E. So the supplemental, that includes a grant writer, as you recall, there was direction from council to get a grant writer, so we put a placeholder in the budget for that. Again, we mentioned diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, we would like to eventually start working on a program for that. We want to start working on process improvement, so we put a placeholder in the budget for that. We mentioned the expanded use of financial systems. We want to do a fee study, obviously, that came up at council on Monday. We did put in a position for an information systems administrator. Again, this will help lead the build out of other systems, help with acquiring and implementing new systems. And supporting existing systems. We do need to replace some carpet and flooring at city hall and other maintenance, so that's also included in there. And then other miscellaneous things that that we have to manage. Next slide. So there's a ton of things we've been working on and a lot of anticipated accomplishments when we close the year. We did start a school safety assessment. That should finish at the beginning of the summer and then be able to be reviewed and implemented by the time school starts next year. And really, that program is or that initiative has shifted to our public safety group, but it has been in coordination with the city manager's office. We started that development services review, we should very shortly be getting a report, probably next month with an implementation action plan. So we should have that by the end of this fiscal year and then. So we should have that by the end of this fiscal year. And then the big step, which is part of our goals for next year, is to actually implement those things. We did receive the twenty first for the twenty first consecutive year, the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the government Finance Officers Association or the GFOA. So that's a huge accomplishment. We got the transactions and use tax ballot measure passed last November, so that'll bring in more revenue to the city. We were, we held a citywide election very smoothly last year in twenty twenty two. A great job by the city clerk's office. Next slide, please. We've also now transitioned to hybrid meetings, which clearly we're doing right now. So that's going well. It's been an accomplishment. We hired a new city manager and a new assistant city manager, and so far, I think I think they're doing okay. That and the next one, I want to pause.
Did you hear that?
Yeah.
He faints.
I do want to pause here, though. We we're anticipating, having done about thirty seven recruitments, we may even hit forty recruitments by the end of this fiscal year. And I have to pause there. We we don't even have a hundred and twenty. Well, if you count council, we have a hundred and twenty employees. So in in a year, we're doing a third of our staff and recruitments. That that that's a big deal. That's our biggest priority right now is recruitment and retention. You know, every organization is dealing with it. It's it's private sector and public sector. The labor force doesn't look like it's going to suddenly grow anytime soon. There's a labor shortage everywhere. But we obviously have other hurdles that we have to do to overcome to be more attractive. So there's things we're working on to try to do that and looking at. And I think having the workshop with the council has been a huge step in the right direction. But there's a ton we're trying to do, and we're doing it with a very limited staff as well. So while that's an accomplishment, it's also a challenge that we'll touch on later, but we have gone through thirty seven plus recruitments, so it's a job well done by HR. We've safely managed the pandemic. We've been able to get through it the last few years. Obviously, there's still some issues with the pandemic ongoing. But for the most part, we've gotten through all the disaster declarations and are almost functioning back to a normal state. And of course, we've further advanced the school district separation through this year. So those have been some big accomplishments. Next slide. Goals and objectives. Obviously, priority one is recruitment and retention. We can't emphasize that enough, and that'll be a theme throughout tonight. Everything we can do to try to recruit and retain people. And as I mentioned before, it's not just salaries that retain people. It's about having a purpose, feeling like you're part of a positive team or culture and having a work life balance. Those are those are really the keys to retaining people. The salaries attract, but that doesn't necessarily keep people. So we have to do the all inclusive part of it and try to keep everybody here. We want to implement the development services improvements. So once we get the guidance on that, we'll want to start making those improvements. And we're looking forward to receiving that report and seeing what the recommendations are. We've touched on permitting software. We want to get going on a permitting software, but of course, if we don't have the staff and the resources to implement a permitting system, we're not going to get very far. So we got to make sure we're ready to receive that. And one thing we're going to try to do is at least an iterative step or an interim step of looking at one component. There's a system out there that we're looking at that will help with some of the plan check review, and that might at least get us part of the way until we're really ready to do a full fledged system. It's it's a huge undertaking to install a permitting system. But it's still a high goal for next year. Of course, we want to do a full fee study, so we'll get an RFP going to do that. And then ongoing city hall maintenance. We'll continue to maintain the city and other facilities. Next slide. We mentioned our financial systems. We want to do an employee self service portal and all the benefits that come with that. We would also like to get to an online budget, which will make building it out simpler in the future. We'll also make it more transparent and interactive. Of course, we want to get a grant consultant or a grant consulting firm. We're looking, working towards a more strategic work plan, and we've already taken the first step with council on that, and hopefully in a few weeks, we'll complete that process and then continue to report on it as we go forward. And then, of course, we want to do more system support, more systems improvement. And when I say systems, I mean information systems. Try to build that out and be as supportive as we can for the organization and as dependable and reliable and provide the best customer service we can. Next slide. So we've already been touching on it, but the challenges that we're experiencing going forward are labor force issues, trying to maintain a workforce. Again, we have nearly a hundred and twenty positions, hundred and fifteen, hundred and twenty. But we have about twenty percent vacancy rate right now, and we're doing everything we can to try to recruit. But the key is trying to keep people with the organization. We have a great foundation and a great team, but we want to build it up so that people aren't burned out and that we can continue to have a positive culture. And so that ties into the next slide of doing the team building and and the culture and trying to work on lowering some of the demands on individuals so that we have a stronger workforce. Local control, this is always a challenge. Things that are happening at the state or at different regulatory bodies that we have to deal with. Of course, this is always a challenge for us. Communications, just trying to make sure that our community is able to receive the information that we're providing. We do a great job of trying to hit all resources, social media, news, everything. But sometimes it's still hard to get a hold of everybody and have people digest what's really happening. So we want to always work on our communications. And then that also is internal. We want to improve our internal communications amongst staff, so staff know what what is happening and and keeping everybody in the loop. And then there's the possibility of a recession looming. We don't quite know what that looks like. Everybody's been somewhat fear mongering for quite a while on that, but it does seem like there could be one pending around the corner. So we want to be mindful of that in our finances and everything else that we're doing. Next slide. So in summary, we have a total budget of about twenty million, fifteen million of that is general fund. We are financially sound. We are in a great fiscal position. We want to try to keep it that way. We have many ongoing initiatives that we're trying to tackle, and we're making progress on. Our biggest priority is recruitment and retention. And we're looking forward to completing the strategic work plan. And with that, we will go on to the next department.
May I ask a question before we get there?
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
On the on page, I guess, is eleven. And I think you said this. I just want to make sure there's a human resources line item that had, he spent four sixty seven last year, we're projecting six ninety one. Does that cover our plan to try and improve recruitment and retention? Or is there more? Is there a different plan, an additional plan coming on top of that?
But we're going to try to have an additional plan on top of that. We do have the class and comp already included in our budget, so that professional service amount. But as I mentioned, we do want to try to have a more comprehensive or a bigger plan, and hopefully we'll come back with that.
I think that's a great idea. Second thing was, you know, the permitting software. You have one of the issues that continues to plague us is trying to get these houses built in the, you know, the stuff moving through the planning department. Now, I I'm I'm going to regret that I even said this. But I realize staff is flat out, okay? The planning department right now is flat out and trying to lay a permitting software on top of them and having them try and get involved with it and design it and all. Is is there any way we can hire some consultants that can help us do that and get that thing in? I mean, I realize that's a risky process to go through. But boy, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what we can do to sort of speed this. I mean, and I keep getting complaints. And I'd like to find a way to, if we can sit down with the residents and say, yeah, here's a step that we can take that's really going to have a major impact in making this work. That, you know, if if planning can't handle it, I understand that. I'm just wondering if there's some outside group that we could, you know, hire to come in and help us put that together and make it work. And you don't have to answer that today. Something you guys got to think about. I I'm reluctant to try and do that because that usually makes has has a chance of making things worse, but as a thought, okay, that's that's all I got. Back to you, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Yeah, I I know you didn't say to answer it, but that is the challenge we have. It's really hard. With those systems, they don't usually have you just hire a consultant, let the consultant implement it. They want staff to configure it and build it out, and that and that's the hard part. But we are looking, we're trying to find solutions. We're doing the same thing, wrapping our brain, trying to figure out what we can do. But we do think we have an interim step that might help with some of the technology or at least an initial step. And then, of course, we're always looking for staff, and we do hope that the implementation action plan that we get back from the consultants will have good recommendations on things we can do to help with process improvement and other improvements in the organization.
Cool. Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt again.
No problem. Yes, the next step should be public safety.
No raised hands on Zoom, so I think you're ready for public safety.
Anybody up here? No, no. Back to you, Joe. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the Public Safety Department. As you probably know, the Public Safety Department consists of both in-house safety programs and contract services. In-house, we do fire safety, community preparedness. We oversee homelessness, emergency planning and training. And then, of course, we contract for law enforcement services and animal control services. We have a total budget of fifteen point two million dollars, the majority of which is for our sheriff's contract. We have a small capital budget of just twenty five thousand. That's really like a placeholder for equipment if it needs fixing, like the sheriff's Ligar equipment, et cetera. We have a general fund budget of fifteen million. We have four point five full time employees. And this year, we have no supplemental requests. So anticipated accomplishments for this year include more than fifty home ignition zone assessments, more than a hundred hazard trees are being removed. Twenty beacon boxes have been installed in Malibu neighborhoods. We'll be hosting a NFPA home hardening class next month. We have two cert classes that will have been provided by the end of this fiscal year, and we will have provided sixteen preparedness classes for the community. We've also conducted thirty three EOC training sessions, one multi agency earthquake exercise held at twenty twenty three Public Safety Expo, which is on June tenth. Got to put that plug in. Hope to see you there. We will have established a temporary impound yard at Malibu High School, and we will have installed two of the twelve ALPR cameras. In addition, we conducted the twenty twenty three homeless count, and sixty two unhoused people were moved into interim or permanent housing this fiscal year. Thirty, more than thirty three homeless encampments have been cleared, and we secured three interim shelter beds for our use. Goals and objectives that we've identified for next year include updating our emergency operations plan, expanding emergency radio capabilities to include partnering with KBO to expand broadcast radio for emergency use, and also expanding our handheld radio capabilities. We'll conduct one multi agency exercise, and we're planning to conduct a functional exercise and conduct three cert classes. We also plan to continue to assist residents with the new brush clearance requirements. You've probably heard of Zone Zero. We expect that to be challenging, so we expect our our fire liaisons to be very busy with that. We'll continue to reduce Malibu's unhoused population. We will provide twenty community education events and continue to mitigate public safety impacts related to homelessness. We also will be implementing a new EOC management system. That's a computer system that we use in our emergency operations center to help us organize and manage the event. We will be conducting city hall fire safety training and conducting a city hall evacuation drill and monthly EOC trainings. And lastly, workplace safety training for city staff. Challenges that we see coming our way include the expiration of the eviction moratorium in LA. There is a chance that we could see more homeless individuals migrating into our area. AB thirty seventy four, Zone Zero, could impact more demand for the services, our fire liaisons to help folks understand how they can comply with that. And then increased potential for large wildfire. With all these rains we've had, which has been really great, it also has added to the the growth of vegetation. So we do expect as things dry out that the wildfire risk will be increased. And then, of course, staffing shortages. And this is really talking about staffing shortages of our partner agencies. The Sheriff's Department is having a lot of challenges filling all their spots. CHP is having staffing challenges. And our homeless outreach contractor, the people concerned, is always having constant staffing challenges. In summary, although we have all these challenges, our department, we expect that we will continue to increase community preparedness, reduce wildfire hazards, increase city EOC capabilities, increase communication capabilities, and reduce the unhoused population. And I'm available for any questions.
And I apologize for keep doing this, but I don't get to sit in this chair very often, so I very much. I've heard throughout the year that we needed another VOP car. Is that in the budget someplace to get one of those, an extra car?
Yeah, that would be in Public Works does vehicles, and that will be done.
That's included in that.
I don't know if it is yet, but I know we have the VOP card that is probably totaled. But our plan is to get another VOP car, and that would be in the Public Works budget.
There was the VOP car we have to replace, but I've heard throughout the year, there was a need for an additional car. Is that?
And I think I would advise that because one of our two, there's, well, some of the other VOP cars are getting on in years, and we probably need to get one in the works because we know it takes a while to bring one online. So we may need to start the process for two, one to replace and one for the future replacement of one that will be out of service soon.
Excellent. Just one other thing, and we may hear this later. I I've talked to some people from Public Safety Commission, okay? And there has been some discussion about the need for additional sheriff resources to deal with some of the speeding that's taking place like on the west end of the city and all that stuff. Now, I don't know if that's in our budget. Then maybe when we get to public comment, Chris Frost is here, the deputy is here. I'm going to ask them to give us a little overview, and you guys can decide if you want to figure out a way to put some of that in the budget for the upcoming year. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you that what's in the budget was the estimate that we received to put staff at the new substation, to possibly have a met team, and to possibly have, I think, a community service officer for parking enforcement. But we have also gotten quotes for, or we're looking at quotes for additional motor units for traffic.
Okay, cool, cool. These gentlemen can help talk to speak to that before we get to the end. Steve, you'd like to go? I'm sorry.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton. And I and thank you. Susan just covered it because we were just in discussions today in terms of, I think we're all thinking in the same direction here in terms of what can we do to get additional officers out there to address the traffic, particularly on the weekend. So that is something we're actively looking at, but it's not in here right now.
Thank you very much. Paul?
Yeah, Susan, this is where I get into the questions. And the world's worst thing for you is you got somebody who used to be on the Public Safety Commission, used to see these numbers. So I got questions for you. I looked at the numbers for, let's call it this year, and I think our total expense was ten million, three hundred eighteen thousand, and that included beach and patrol. I know we've got an increase from the county of seven point six three percent. So when you take the seven point six three percent, and I'm calling this the baseline, it would be up to eleven million, one oh five. Your total budget is that you've asked for is thirteen million, five oh nine. And I think this is getting to where you were just talking to Steve and Steve. I'm assuming that's for the sheriff's substation, the vet team. So are we, can you give us an idea of what your staffing you're looking at on this to see how close? So are we, can you give us an idea of what your staffing you're looking at on this to see how close we are to what we think we want? And I know what I think I want. I know what I think Chris wants. I know what Captain C two wants, and I think I know what the sergeant wants. So just tell me how close we are to all this.
I think it's close because that number was derived by taking the quote that we got for staffing the substation with counter service, adding a MET team, and adding in, I don't think I want to say it right, community service officer, planning officer, someone to do the parking enforcement. It didn't include the additional motors at that time. So I used that quote, and then I added the seven point six three percent. And again, it's an estimate because we don't have the formal, you know, quote from the Sheriff's Department for this. So I use that as my number.
Okay. As you know, I've always advocated for getting this substation opened up. And I'll go on the record here as saying, I think this needs to be addressed, not just from adding the extra staff, but the force multiplier effect. And I hope when we see the contract from the county, this includes that the deputies will start their workday at the substation.
Yes, that is correct.
The cars will be spaced here. They're going to say proudly serving the city of Malibu. Because where I'm driving on this is to have, in effect, the image, if not the substance, of a Malibu Police Department. And I think having a lieutenant and a sergeant to assist with the management, not to mention the extra boots on the ground, would be very good. The one thing that we're missing, that I think we want to see on the budget, is the chart of allocated staff. We've done this before where you say it's Monday, we're going to have this patrol unit. You remember the chart I'm talking about.
Yeah, and as soon as, and we're still early in the budget, as you know. We are working on setting up a date with the Sheriff's Ad-Hoc Committee to look at the substation staffing. And once we get that fleshed out a little bit more, then we can get to that because it's very useful. I keep it pinned up on my board to look at every day.
Right now, I wish I'd kept mine. But then, I think that's going to be helpful for us to see about allocating the resources to when we think we need them, and especially on weekends. And I think the motor officer, and I had some discussions today with Chris Frost, I think we may only want one additional motor officer. Because when you count them, we're going to have four, because there's supposed to be three already. And then, how they're allocated during the week and where they're allocated may be very helpful to us. So I think you're making good progress on this. Love to get this button down as soon as we can. I'd love to have that flag flying over that says City Malibu Police Department. So, thank you.
Hey Doug, thank you very much. Kelsey, anything from our mayor or Mary Ann?
You have a raised hand from Councilmember Riggins.
Okay. Iran.
I think I have a question about CHP. I know there's a lot of talk that we have to pay for CHP. Do we actually have an amount that that might cost to be able to supplement that? I know there's a hundred thousand dollars listed for on-call, but do we have a number if we wanted to have CHP be in our town on a more regular schedule? Thank you.
We don't, but what I can say is they are so short-staffed that I'm not even sure if we could get that. Because even with this hundred thousand that we have, the last few times when I've requested CHP, they haven't been able to give me any bodies. I've requested, again, for Memorial Day weekend, and they're not sure. They're trying, and I put my request in as early as I could, and we're crossing our fingers we can get somebody. So I think even if we said we want to hire CHP permanently in Malibu, I don't know if they can deliver. But, I mean, we can certainly ask, but they're having very challenging staffing issues.
Yes. Mayor, you have any comments?
No.
No? Okay. Susan, thank you very, very much. I appreciate your help. Okay. Back to whoever's driving the train.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Proton and council members. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the Community Services Department budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. The Community Services Department provides multiple recreation opportunities for residents of all ages. And the department strives to provide clean and well-maintained parks and facilities at our seven parks across the city while focusing on native habitats and landscapes. Community Services Department staff serve as liaisons to three commissions, including the Parks and Recreation Commission, Malibu Arts Commission, and Youth Commission. We work with these commissioners to provide insight regarding the community's needs and requests on programming and events. And great customer service and positive interactions are essential to the department's operations. And we will go on from there. This year, this Community Services Department has a total budget of five point seven million. This includes operation of program, recreation program, art programs and events, special events, park maintenance, and improvement projects and staffing. Something not noted here, but our projected revenue for next fiscal year is approximately six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Next fiscal year, the department is going to focus on parks and facility maintenance and preventative maintenance. So this directly relates to the request for three hundred and ten thousand dollars in capital improvement. And this is mainly for the installation of sod on our multipurpose field at Malibu Bluffs Park. In this past year, we worked with Malibu Little League to kind of do a pilot program on the sod. We installed it on our baseball fields and have found it very successful. So we hope that with the inclusion of sod on the multipurpose field, it will help with just the disrepair that it's in. We're also working with the Earth Friendly Management Group to come up with ways to find natural and organic solutions to help our soil at the park. And funding for the Community Services Department, the general fund is four point five million. And the Legacy Park Fund includes nine hundred and ninety-two thousand. And this money is primarily used in our department to maintain the park's native habitats, restoration, plantings, and educational outreach regarding that park. Prop A is used mainly in our senior center for our Dial-A-Ride program, which it supplements. We also use that money for senior center excursions and special event transportation. We have, we're fortunate, we have ten full-time staff members who, almost all of them have been with us. Six have been with us for over ten years. So we're happy to work as a team in our department and with the assistance of part-time staff, which you see there is twelve point six nine percent. And our part-time staff cover facilities. The Michael Landon Center and pool are open seven days a week. And right now, we're staffing the Michael Landon Center for our summer hours. Those people work twelve, two people work twelve hours to cover that facility. And then, our supplemental request, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. That is mainly the sod installation request. We're also going to plan to do some improvements at the Michael Landon Center. A large portion of that is also some repairs that need to happen at the temporary skate park. That park was only supposed to be there for two years, and it's been since twenty twenty. So it is definitely needs some repairs next fiscal year as we prepare for our permanent skate park. We're also putting some storage sheds at the Bluffs Park for our maintenance staff in Charmley Wilderness Park. And then, this is also just an increase in operations at our senior center, since we're back at full operations in that facility. Accomplishments over the last fiscal year, this department has offered over four hundred and fifty recreational programs from tiny tots to seniors. And we did some Michael improvements at the Michael Landon Center. We upgraded our flooring. We upgraded office spaces, and we're excited to continue to focus on upgrades in our facilities next fiscal year. Our city special events resumed. We had two days of Chumash Day. Last year, it was just one. We brought back Halloween Carnival and Tiny Tot Olympics this past year. So we're excited to bring those special events back to the community. We are continuing our habitat restoration at Legacy Park, and we look for opportunities to do more habitat restoration at all of our city parks. We conducted six art exhibitions in the Malibu City Gallery while working in conjunction with our Malibu Arts Commission. We are so excited to be on the kind of last end of this temporary snack shack improvement project. The demolition finished today, so we're excited to start the process of adding a new container there in the next few weeks and have it up and operating for our Little League partners. We'll continue our after-school programs with the Boys and Girls Club at Malibu Elementary School and Webster Elementary School. In November of this past year, we installed shade structures at Malibu Bluffs Park. That has been an ongoing and long process, but they're finally up, and I think the community is really enjoying those. As I mentioned before, senior center programs are all back up and running. We continued excursions this past year. And we have senior center luncheons happening now, so we're happy to see more people in our senior center and using those facilities. And in partnership with the City Manager's Office, we have now a state ranger at Charmley Wilderness Park. The Community Services Department assisted with getting that residence trailer up and running. It was a long haul, but we did it. And so our state ranger, we are in communication with him almost daily just to get an update on kind of what's happening there and just giving him updates on film shoots or rentals or anything up there that needs his attention. Next year, our primary focus will be the permanent skate park while working with various city agencies, including Planning Department is a big partner in this, but we're excited to move that forward. We hope to get that in front of Planning Commission this summer and go out to bid with the assistance of the Public Works Department by the end of the year, and we hope we'll be up and run, not up and running, but construction twenty twenty-four. The Michael Landon Center will continue to see some upgrades. We, as a safety measure, we are looking to install automatic door locks. On occasion, there's a door left open, and we're not privy to it until our custodial crew enters the building and lets us know about that. So hopefully, that'll mitigate those problems. With a lot of senior programs, kind of, we have, do have senior programs in the Michael Landon Center. There is a playground right outside that activity room. They've requested blinds to be put up there. So we'll get some blinds similar to the ones here at City Hall. And working with the Public Works Department, we're also going to fix the roof. It's been in, it's been leaking through these past severe storms, so it's something on our priority list. Recently, with JPIA, our insurance agency, we did a wildfire risk assessment at our city parks. So next fiscal year, we hope to help mitigate wildfire risks by upgrading some of the facilities at our parks, such as removing vegetation and maybe some window upgrades and those sorts of things. I already mentioned the turf renovation at Malibu Bluffs Park. And we'll continue to focus on native habitats and working with our Earth Friendly Management Outreach Group, I mean, Earth Friendly Management Working Group. And outreach and education is important for our department, just to let people know, you know, how to have native gardens in their homes and what we're doing at our parks to help habitats. Malibu Arts Commission has expressed an interest in creating an artist creative directory. We'll work with them directly to figure out the guidelines and hopefully print that directory or have it available online next fiscal year. Some themes running through this, recreation software upgrades. We're looking at options to just have a better interface with our customers and make things a little bit easier. Joe Tony kind of touched on this a little bit, but we process over thirty part-time staff timesheets, so we're hoping to go digital and working with the administration department. So we hope to get those upgrades next, this upcoming fiscal year. Part of the Parks and Recreation Commission's interest is park safety. And so we are looking to install call boxes at some of our remote parks that do not have services. Some of our challenges, of course, in our department are hiring part-time staff. Obviously, we need boots on the ground, and people want to work remote, which I can't have a lifeguard working remote. So hiring part-time staff, we're challenged with that. We have ideas, which we'll bring across to the City Manager's Office of kind of some incentives for hiring part-time staff. The next two items are results of our, all the rain we received this last year. But we have an abundance of invasive species at our parks due to our earth-friendly management program. Those either have to be hand-pulled, weed-whacked. We don't use any chemicals to solve those problems. So we're just needing some more time and attention to addressing those invasive species. Erosion mitigation is prevalent at Charmley Wilderness Park. We're working with the Public Works Department to find out if we can use some grant funding, FEMA money to help out with erosion. There is, it is, it is there, and we need to come up with a permanent solution. So we're addressing some of those ideas. Preventative maintenance at our parks, most of our parks are ten years old or older. So we're coming into a situation where they need a lot of repairs. And as I mentioned earlier, that will be a focus of the department this next fiscal year. And then, just expanding recreation offerings. Some of our facilities are kind of maxed out on program offerings, such as the pool. We can't add any more hours to what we're doing there. And then, some of our field space after three o'clock is primarily used by our leagues, AYSO and Little League. So just finding creative ways to continue to offer programs in our recreation department and meet the community's needs. In summary, our budget, besides the sod, is pretty comparable to last fiscal year. Our staff are operating, are very financially conscious on what they spend money on. And we will continue to be aware of that. Working with the Public Works Department, we have various CIPs on the book, which Public Works, Rob DeBeau will talk about. But we want to prioritize those, get those moving. And obviously, those are related to facility improvements. Community partnerships are strong in our department. We will continue to work with the Boys and Girls Club next year, Malibu Library, Pepperdine University, Chamber of Commerce, Malibu Arts Association, just to expand our services and offerings next fiscal year. I kind of discussed streamlining processes, and as far as technology, we'll continue to focus on that. And once again, it's like the theme of community services, facility improvements will be on our top priority list. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, fellow council members. Any questions, comments?
I've got a couple of quick comments. By the way, you know, I said this to Dane the other day when he was here. You know, your group is the public face to so many people of our city. You're the customer facing for much of their interaction. So a lot of responsibility there, and you guys do a very good job at it. One thing that I did not see in your presentation, and we've talked about it, it may not be on there yet. There's been a lot of discussion, I know, with the commissioners about, and that's been in the arts group, the parks group, about having some permanent facilities designed and not asking for it to be in the budget this year. But I think if there was some way for us to start the process of mapping out what we want and where we want it, that way, if you think that when we're sitting here this time next year, we can begin to figure out how to pay for it and how we're going to start it. And I think that's, that would be a real positive step and be an answer to many people's requests to have whatever. to have whatever it's a pool or a paddleball court or more fields, but to start to turn our vacant land into the parks that we always wanted for. So I would ask that if we can, just try and put that in the work schedule. I don't think it's going to take a lot of time, but I have no idea, so. Okay, any raised hands? Paul, excuse me.
As to what Doug said, it might be a good idea for if we were to put aside a little money so that when people are doing conceptual plans for us and everything, we could get some budget for outside people to work those up for us so that we could bring them into a meeting. And if nothing else, have a stalking horse for inviting the community into looking at them and telling them, having them tell us what we did wrong and what they would like to see in addition to that. So if we could set aside some for that, that'd be great. Good idea, Doug.
Steve, anything on your side?
Well, I'm actually glad that both council members mentioned that. And I think that's something that we'll get into a little further on the work plan. But if there's general consensus with the staff, can certainly take a look at that and bring that back.
Okay.
You got it.
Any raised hands, Kelsey?
I believe Councilmember Riggins had a question.
Mary Ann, you're on.
I just wanted to concur with Doug and Paul. I think it's important that we start putting in place what the steps are going to be required for community input. And, you know, if we need to allocate funds for this proposed budget, whether we're hiring a consultant or like Paul suggested, coming up with conceptual plans to present to the community so we can get some feedback. I think it's really important that we do put that on for this budget that we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much. You did a nice job.
Good evening, City Council. I have Tracy Rosin join with me this evening. She's our Environmental Programs Manager. I am pleased to present our proposed environmental sustainability department budget. My department is comprised of four different departments and programs. Building in Safety and Sustainability, Waste Water, Clean Water, Solid Waste. And let me share with you a high-level summary of what we do. Building in Safety and Sustainability is responsible for the construction permits, the building inspections, the building plumbing, mechanical, electrical, energy, green building code, and grading plan checks, and geotechnical and coastal engineering reviews. Waste Water administers the permitting and the oversight of all new and alter and renovated on-site wastewater treatment systems to ensure compliance, not only with our LCP requirements, but also with our state and local ordinance and standards. This program also oversees the operating permits, the point-of-sale, our registered practitioners, and our frequent pumper program. Our Clean Water serves to protect the quality in the local creeks, on the streams, and in the oceans. We do this through education, outreach, and regulatory compliance. The Solid Waste Management Program implements the city recycling and hauling policies and requirements that meets the state and Monday's diversion requirements. Next slide, please. As a general overview of the Environmental Sustainability Department, we currently have a $5.8 million budget. We are funded by the General Fund, the Measure W, a special revenue fund for the clean water programs, and Solid Waste Management Fund. ESD has twenty-one full-time positions with extremely dedicated staff. But we still have two vacant positions that has been very difficult to fill. One of them is our Senior Permit Technician, and the other one is the Associate Civil Engineer. Both of these positions are critical for plan check reviews and for our permitting process. We also have plan review consulting firms, which we utilize for a large amount of plan checks that we do and sometimes for the overflow inspections that fall under both the woolsey and regular work that we do. It is because of this, the large work and the increase in demand as a result of the planning department increased contract staff, that I am proposing a request of $2.5 million on my additional funding. It is important to mention that the cost of the additional plan check services will be offset by revenue generated from plan check fees. Next slide, please. I wanted to give you an overview of the operations and give you a comparison on what we do and the numbers. Here's our general operations associated with the numbers. I would like to put an emphasis on the expected increase in plan checks. The numbers that you're seeing for fiscal year 2022, 2023 are actual real numbers as March 31st. As shown, the plan check review numbers are expected to increase over the next year and the inspection numbers will follow with the same trend. We are processing about 2,700 plan checks per year and processing more than 2,500 construction permits yearly. We're expecting this to increase by more than thirty percent next year due to all of the woolsey fire that is still under review. We have a hundred families that are still going through the process of completing their plan check review and another 120 that they haven't submitted to us. Our construction inspections will continue to increase. We are receiving approximately 7,000 inspections per year. We have 128 woolsey fire homes under construction in addition to all the non-woolsey projects. This is making a big impact in our daily operations. I foresee that the strain will continue growing for us. Next slide, please. Here are more of our general operations and associated numbers. In addition to the building and safety and sustainability projects, I want to make a highlight to this. Staff also responds to public records requests. We manage contracts and grants, conduct outreach. The number of public inquiries that we receive yearly are close to the 3,500. This is people that come in person to our counters, but also send us emails, phone calls that we need to respond to them. And with the new way that we're doing our operations electronically, it is creating a growth in electronic document upload to our systems. We are uploading about 600 yearly. Next slide, please. Given the history of the already increased regular workflow that we are experiencing, and with the expecting planning projects that are in the queue, I can expect us to continue with an upward momentum in this coming fiscal year. I need us to be ready. This means that the increased approved projects will generate more and more inspections and more requests that will come to our counters and our office. As you know, customer service is at the top of my priorities. I often refer to our city as a boutique city, and therefore I hold my staff to ten to twenty-one days of turnaround time for plan check reviews, which we so far has been able to maintain. However, with the expected increase in plan check reviews, there are concerns and I need to be prepared with more consulting staff so we are able to continue the best service possible for our organization. Next slide, please. Here are a few anticipated accomplishments of this fiscal year. I highlighted a few, 132 homes completed for woolsey fire, 450 inspections completed for woolsey fire. But with the current storms, we have been responding to emergency slope failures, sinkholes. And right now I have about twelve sites that we are overseeing. It is very difficult to capture and possibly impossible to capture in two slides all of the work that is being done by the department. I know that all of you are aware of our environmental workload as we have been doing presentations in the past three city council meetings. But it's extremely important for me that in this budget cycle, you recognize that our Building in Safety and Sustainability team, this also include our geotechnical, our environmental health, and our coastal staff. They have gone above and beyond the general assignment to continue putting council's priorities at the top of our list, such as woolsey fire rebuilds by also expedited turnaround time. Staff is doing this with professionalism and with compassion to assist every applicant equally. Next slide, please. We also continue to keep the city under state compliance with all of our legislative obligations, which are extremely important. While implementing and enforcing all of the new ordinance and resolutions the city council is directing us to complete, we make sure that all of the staffs are kept to the highest of standards and with high-quality customer service. Next slide, please. Our common goals for the department are to continue to focus on the same quality service Environmental Sustainability Department has been providing to that community. Not only by completing council direction around our work plan, but also maintaining, if not improving, our project turnaround time and our customer service. I also want to get our team out to the public with more town hall meetings and community events, enhancing the outreach and education that we do to the public. I believe communication is such a critical way to continue being transparent to all of our citizens. Next slide, please. Even with the changes we have made this last year, ESD still to face a few challenges, such as making sure current staff has a balanced workload. Feeling our vacancy has been a challenge. Not having a more robust software and project tracking system that speaks to the public is one of our biggest challenges. And having time to focus on onboarding and training on new staff also has been taking a lot of time. My intent is that with this new budget cycle, we can address the trends and challenges that we're facing, including retention of staff, building morale of the group, and completing inspections and plan checks that have grown exponentially and will continue to grow, while we continue rebuilding the trust with our community. Next slide. In closure, I plan to focus oversight at the public counters and make sure that there is a continued smooth workflow with projects by adding more professional service funds in the amount of $2.5 million and therefore increasing the ability to get additional expedited help for plan check review from consulting firms for building, geotechnical, coastal, environmental health. This will only allow the current staff to properly balance workloads and assisting with the onboarding of new hires. We can be confident on their responsibilities in addition to making our community feel heard and welcome to our cities. I want to thank my incredible staff. I cannot be here without them. They are the frontline people for the city and I'm very proud. And I special thanks to Tracy Rosin this evening. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Yolanda. City council members, comments, questions?
I just want to thank you for everything you do to put a good face on the city of Malibu. I really appreciate the emails I get from members of the public thanking me for the way your department is behaving and the way you reach out. We really like that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Paul, Doug, Mary Ann. Any raised hands down there, Kelsey?
No raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, never done. Yolanda, thank you very, very much. I do appreciate the work you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Richard, come on down.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, my plan here is just to give you a brief overview of some of the challenges faced by the department, accomplishments, and our goals for the upcoming year. On this slide, you see our total budget, $5.7 million. We are looking for an addition this year of extra money to fund consulting services and then also an addition of three new full-time employees to the department. And this is part of, as mentioned earlier, the multi-year plan to grow the department. We have scaled back what we anticipated on adding this year in terms of new employees primarily due to our inability, I don't know if I want to use that word, but we have had challenges and I'll get into it, fulfilling the additional positions that we received last year. And so if we would have continued along the projected path from last year, we'd be bringing on almost half the number of planners I have now, which would just become an issue with training. And I am currently balancing the training and also the need to get stuff done. And we really can't stop and train a whole new department. So we have to, you know, work on a small group and keep moving forward. So this is just kind of a snapshot of some of the things we hope to wrap up in the next couple of months. So far this year, some of the big accomplishments that you don't see here are just the day-to-day operations with our fire rebuild team. We did lose one of the staff members early on in this year who was part of that team. We've had to shift responsibilities in the department, but it is still a major priority of the department. We have our counter hours at the public counter for fire rebuilds in addition to our regular counter hours. During the past year, we also were able to process the Malibu High School LCPA. That's something that was submitted to the department in late December, early January, and by May, it was already brought to the Planning Commission and the following month the city council. We've got the LCPA up at the Coastal Commission level and we are currently working on the CDP for the actual development of the high school. However, in the next few months, we want to continue to focus on our development process improvements. That has been a major goal for me in the department. And when I say that, it's not that the goal is to run projects through the department as fast as possible. It really has to do with reviews. It has to do with getting back to the public in a timely manner and also getting back to the public in a timely manner with very complete reviews. One of the items I noticed was that planners weren't being able to spend enough time to really identify all of the problems or concerns on a set of plans early on. And so it's really important that we have that thoroughness. That is an important part of the process and we are working on it. And we've made great strides this year. From what I've been able to tell from tracking the progress on some of these projects, it's led to some changes in procedures of the department so that we are more efficient. We also are looking forward this year to finishing, hopefully, fingers crossed, the issuance of the Contingent Use Permit for the tow yard. Since I've become director, it seems that this is an important topic as we approach every summer. Since I've become director, it seems that this is an important topic as we approach every summer. We tend to not have a solution, whether it be an issue of with finding something in our code or finding a lot. This year, hopefully, things will come together and next month we'll be issuing the conditional use permit to achieve this so that there is a place for future summers to be used as a tow yard. A recent task sent to the planning department has been the snack shack. We have at the last council meeting, we did complete the interpretation and as of yesterday, the department issued. The approval for the container to be placed at like at Bluffs Park. I know this is a temporary container, but. Nevertheless, it was something that was submitted to us as a project. We tracked it and completed it. Another accomplishment we're looking forward to finishing before the end of the year. Is the completion, hopefully, of the planning commission hearings on the temporary use permit ordinance. That update was something that was started by the previous council. And we look to try to wrap that up at the city council so that after this fiscal year, it's something we could bring to this or after wrap up at the planning commission. So we could bring it to this city council later this summer and get that update in place because I know that it is an important one for the community. For the upcoming years, our focus remains on dark skies compliance, working through that. We'd like to also complete the pesticide ban regulations, the interpretation to bring that back, a formal interpretation to the city council. We are currently working on the state skate park entitlements. That includes a coastal development permit and a secret document, an EIR addendum. We are working on that EIR presently and the goal is this summer to have all of that in the hands of the decision makers so that that can continue to move forward. As I mentioned, the Malibu High School project is another goal we have in the department. That's currently with the California Coastal Commission. I will say that Renika does a very good job, our senior planner, of pestering the coastal commission. So that we can try to get some feedback so that we understand and have an idea of any changes or modifications that the coastal commission may be considering. With the local coastal program amendment that we have currently pending with the coastal commission. We'd like to try to get ahead of that so that if there are any changes that need to be made, we can get them back to the council and and try to keep this moving. And as I mentioned, we've also started work on preparing the coastal development permit draft of that so that once we have some feedback from the coastal commission. And have an idea of where that's going to go, we can get moving on that as well. And also as part of that, there is also the component of a restoration plan to address the brush clearance that took place last year. Behind the baseball fields. That was another item important to some of the local residents. The ADU ordinance, we are putting the final touches on that so that we can present that to the city council and that's another goal that we have. We'd like to get that to the council this summer. We this past, actually, excuse me, last March. We completed, I believe, our fifth meeting at this planning commission level to get a recommendation out of the commission so we can bring it to this council. The housing element update is another priority. There's been a number of changes in in the laws related to that and HCD. Has become a bit more critical on their review of housing elements and wanting to ensure progress in cities in California. So there has been some changes there. Those changes have also resulted in a little bit more work, but you know, tomorrow I have a meeting with HCD. We'll be meeting with them and the the goal is to identify what other comments they have and and bring that back hopefully shortly to this council. So that we can get their housing element updates certified by HCD. And as you see here, there would be continued improvement on development process. That, as I mentioned, is something important to us and my biggest concern there is really just ensuring that we are responsive to the public. Whether we're giving them good news or bad news, I believe we have a. It's important for us to make certain that we get that news to them in a timely manner and also, once again, completeness. Very, it's very important that thorough work is completed. Some of the challenges faced, as I mentioned earlier, staff recruitment and retention. Currently, it's if you look at who's has experience in the department. 10 years or more for planning, there's only two of us. Myself and the assistant director for planners. We have two senior planners with experience over five years. And then beyond that, the majority of the planners you have are here, two years. We currently have a number of vacancies in our department. We've been actively recruiting for those and just to let you in on the progress there. About two weeks ago, we held interviews for assistant, or excuse me, associate planners. The panel felt that the folks that were we interviewed would not make the cut here. I am going to go back and do a little bit more follow-up on that, but just to let you know, it wasn't a a new panel or a naive panel. That was the third time I used that particular panel, that those three members. Today, we held interviews for the assistant planner position. We started this with 17 confirmed applicants. However, by this morning, about eight of those dropped off and a. Get my numbers straight here, another two or three, I apologize, but another two or three just didn't show up today for the interviews. So I want to say we interviewed about six folks, six or seven folks. So that just gives you an idea of some of the challenges we're having. We are actively pursuing recruitments and we do. Try to keep some positions open until filled, just so that we can keep trying to find somebody because my biggest issue is that I've got some good folks. Some of those folks will be promoted, but I can't keep promoting the ones I have. I need to start building up more troops. We can't just have a bunch of generals out there. So that is something that we're working on is trying to bring in just more staff at at present. We have about five vacancies in there. And so I really do want to fill those because we are right now heavily dependent on our consultants. And we need to start shifting it towards city staff, staff that we train and staff that we retain. That is important. Some of the other challenges include pivoting between priorities. One of the major causes for us is is the state of California. There are a lot of new bills coming down from the legislature that cause us to add those. To our list of things that the department needs to complete in the year. For example, there was recent legislation about fee waivers for other state agencies working within the city. And if the city doesn't give them a fee waiver or reduced fee, they could just go straight to the California Coastal Commissioners and skip our review process. These types of things we have to jump on and so they do take away from just our. Attempt at trying to stick to our work plan and getting the priorities that have been identified for the department completed. We're also working through a very large backlog and what doesn't help is constant reassignments as staff leaves the city. Homeowners, it's no surprise when they get reassigned to a new planner, it's it's like death. They feel that their project is going to start all over again. And there is a bit of catch-up, of course, for the new planner coming in, depending on how many reviews have been completed by the previous planner. And then also there's a matter of this, there are emails, there are phone calls, there's communications between an applicant and their planners. And all of that, of course, has to start over. So the backlog is something that we are working to get through. However, it does take us time. We spend a lot of time really just interfacing with residents just to let them to give updates on where they are. And and research. And then another challenge for the department has been the digital development process. Prior to COVID, this department was heavily reliant on paper. All of our desks, they had accordion folders that were stuffed with plans. Now all that's gone. Overnight, we essentially converted our paper process to a paperless process. However. As I mentioned, it was a conversion of how we did things with paper to doing it without paper. That has that has brought us some problems. The public doesn't understand why is it that, you know, they've submitted something digitally within the last year? How come that can't cross pollinate into other applications? Why do we continue to ask for the same form over and over? We definitely need to look at our process. Now that it's digital, perhaps there's a different way to do it. A digital file should not be treated the same way as a hard copy file. Those are challenges that we're working through. And another challenge with it too is that we've tried to make things work. And now hopefully with bringing on consultants, looking at new software, that's going to really aid in that situation because right now. For someone submitting an application digitally, it's extremely challenging. Trying to make certain we get the right forms and the right format is something we struggle with. In summary, for the department, you I just want to go over the fact that we are looking for additional funding for support staff and consultants. The department strives to improve its review process. And as I mentioned here, you'll see it again, navigate a new digital process. It has to do a lot with trying to find a good way to. Digitize what we're doing and also make that something that we can interface with the public in a way that provides for high levels of customer service. It's there's some ease for the for the customer, for our folks to come to the counter, whether it be the residents, the architects. It it used to be when we were, you know, long established as working with paper. The applicants really knew what to do and could provide good advice to the residents that hired them. But right now, everybody's a newbie. And whether it be the homeowner or the architect, they need a lot of help and 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 a lot of that just has to do with us working on ways to streamline our processes. And put the information out there to help people navigate, you know, a digital portal for submitting. Digital communications back and forth as we review their projects. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Council members, questions, comments, Paul?
May I? Richard, I want to I want to thank you for your activity on the. On the things that make a difference to everybody's life, things like the snack shack, things like the tow yard. I think that the key to getting through this summer is the tow yard and the activities of our volunteers on patrol in the LA Sheriff's Department. We have really experienced what happens if you don't pay attention to that and, you know, we're on the right track. I'd like to keep us on that track. The other thing you said that the there's a state program about us providing fee waivers. To outside agencies that want to work within the in the community. Can you give me an example of, I mean, if Caltrans wants to do something, they want a fee waiver, if who else kind of things?
This would be groups, so state it's my understanding under this new bill, and I'm sorry, I don't have the state bill number. It's like 1635 or something. I can get it for those who are interested. But a great example of this for is, you know, we we do review a number of MRCA projects. Public staircases, for example. Under this, the the new state bill that was passed, the the one to effect this January. These if. If they come to us with the project or projects under review and we have either the say the coastal development permit fee. Or if, say, on a public access way, there is the the fees charged by. Our geotechnical reviewers, coastal engineers. If the city chooses to not waive the fees or reduce the fees. Then that agency has the opportunity to go to the coastal commission and have the CDP issued by the coastal commission and the city would lose its jurisdiction.
Fascinating. I guess that's why it does stuff without permits to save us the trouble. Okay. And very interested in the digital development process and and wishing you all the luck and and support in the world on that. I think it. I I'm in love with the idea of a person putting something in and having it circulated to all the different. Departments and when a change is made on one department, it automatically shows up in the other departments. So that people are not so. People get very frustrated with the whole process of taking things back to the people who've already had it. So I'm looking forward to that. I hope it's successful. And anything we can do to help you with it, we're in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, Doug.
Yeah, Richard, I echo what Paul said about you guys jumping on hot projects. They don't move the needle much for the stack of papers in your office, but it does help us with the citizens and the residents. And as I was saying to the park side of the world, you know, you're part of the customer-facing world and appreciate what you can do there. Couple of quick comments. I will tell you, software transitions, every time I've done that in my business career, it's almost put us out of business. And I wish you luck on it and I got to tell you, a database system that populates all the different users is. We did it at the printing company I ran and it took us almost two years and we had a pretty big staff to work on it. So good luck on it. Hopefully, it's a package program. One of the things I want to ask you, and by the way, you know, we're all all rooting to try and help you. So is there anything that we can do to help you either with your recruitment, your retention? Or training and, you know, I've talked about Malibu U and so forth, but is there anything that you need from us? That isn't in your budget or you'd like to have? I mean, I think we're all ears. If you've got some suggestions or needs, we're going to try and help you.
No, I I do appreciate that and you the staff retention is key because of what you said there, the Malibu University. We had, we lost a couple of really good planners. We put them through essentially a planning school and. We spent about two weeks, half day each day, going through just different aspects of the department and also aspects of the city. And so we're at a point where it's a bit hard to do that because of our staffing numbers, but we need to get back to that. But we are looking and I have been working with the city manager ways to to make certain that we are doing what we can to keep the folks we have. Make them feel vested and then, as I mentioned, making recruitment a priority.
You know, along that line, every every corporation and granted, you know, we're we're a small business here as opposed to a major corporation. Has always let the HR department sort of be the one that ran the guidelines and did the support for that. I don't know if that's practical to do in our world or not, but you know, maybe it's it's an idea. I could say that was always the HR department. Had the responsibility for keeping those programs running and and keeping them on track. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Mayor, Kelsey, raised hands?
Mayor Silverstein has raised his hand.
Mayor, you're on.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to echo the appreciation for this presentation by Richard as well as everyone that we've had so far. I've been very impressed with all these presentations. I appreciate all the work that went into them and how well they've been presented. On this automated, sorry, on this fee waiver and reduction issue from this new bill, I wonder if right now we could get a consensus from the council. To bring back an item promptly to set up an automatic system where those fees are waived or reduced as required by that bill. So that we do not ever accidentally lose jurisdiction because that. That, you know, maybe the purpose of this is to force us to lose jurisdiction, but I want to make sure that doesn't happen. So I wonder if we could get that put on the agenda as promptly as if we can get a consensus to get that on the agenda as promptly as possible to. Set up something that automatically waives it so that nobody could ever claim we don't have jurisdiction over a CDP.
Council members, oh, Richard.
Thank you very much, Mayor Perotan. We are currently planning on bringing an item to this council at the first meeting of June. What we have done right now is essentially we just are processing the application. We are moving forward and and that way there's the city is not seen as holding it up because of monies, but we were going to bring you an item on the. I'm sorry, I don't have the date in front of me, but your first meeting in June.
Thank you, Richard. Anything else, Mayor?
Just what so, Richard, what are you doing in the interim if somebody requests a reduction or a waiver? Do you have the discretionary authority to grant it so that we don't lose our jurisdiction?
What I'm doing is essentially just processing the application and I've let them know that I'm going to be. I let them know MRCA is the group that we're bringing an item to the council and at that time, the council will make a decision and they'll have to. Pay the fees as decided by the council. So. So it's just more of, if you will, I've just delayed the payment but keep doing the work, but have not made a determination on a percentage or waived a fee.
And that complies with the, the bill as you understand it? That doesn't allow them to bypass us?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. Please check with Trevor to make sure that that understanding works with the statute or the bill, whatever it is. I want to make sure that they don't find a loophole to bypass us. Thank you for the presentation. Otherwise.
Mary Ann? Anything for Mary Ann?
I don't see a raised hand for her.
Okay, Richard, thank you very, very much.
I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Richard. A lot of work. MRCA keeps showing up. All right. Rob Layton on us.
Will do. Good evening, council. I'm pleased to present an update and a little discussion on our 2324 budget. First, let me give you kind of a little bit of background on kind of what we do real quick. We do street maintenance. We operate and maintain our, the city fleet. We actually have a few facilities. We have, we have two storm drain facilities that we operate and maintain. We, you all know that we have our Civic Center Water Treatment Facility. We have that operation that we operate and maintain. We oversee the landside maintenance districts. We actually operate or we design and construct capital projects within the city. And we also respond and work on disaster recovery projects and try to get the city's funds for those disaster projects. Okay. So here's an overview of our next year budget. We have an overall budget of 7.9 million. We have a capital improvement project or a budget of 23 million. Of our budget, of our total budget of 7.9 million, 5.3 million is coming from the general fund. I also want to point out too that we have 2 million going towards disaster recovery projects that we plan on doing next year. Currently, we have 12 full-time employees. This upcoming year, I, I am requesting two new job descriptions to be added to our overall city plan. Those are, the first one is a deputy public works director. The other one is a engineering technician. Those, those two positions will help us kind of shift some responsibility and workload throughout our department, make it a little bit better, better function, free up some availability with some other staff so they can, they can focus on responsibilities and duties to, to improve customer service within the, within the city. Currently, we are asking an additional $340,000 difference within the budget. That includes four additional cars. Two of them are being replaced in our fleet. And the rest is coming from additional costs from labor for our contractor maintenance crew. So. So this slide here is showing all of our capital projects we're doing. If you have really good eyes, you can squint down. You can kind of see all of them. I wanted to make sure everyone has their glasses on. No. It's 22 projects we have in here with a total of 23, 23 million. They, they have, there's quite a few projects that, that are multi-year on here. I'll go, there's some other slides. I'll go into some more detail on it. But there's several projects, I think about nine of the projects are brand-new projects that we're going to be introducing this year. The other ones are carryover projects from the previous year. We plan on kind of going. A lot of the projects that are carried on from last year will be moving towards construction phase this upcoming year. So we have quite a few of the capital projects will be in construction phase next year. And so this slide showing, it's showing some of the highlights of the 2324 capital improvement projects that we're going to be working on next year. As you recall, we have a PCH signal synchronization project. That project is improving all the traffic signals from Topanga all the way to John Tyler. That project, we just had a construction meeting with our contractor. They're, they're eager to get started and moving, starting this project within the next two or three weeks. The next project that I'm excited to kind of work on is our City Hall solar project. This project was first designed and ready to go out for construction bids in 2019, in 2018. We had to put it on hold for, for the Wosley Fire. And now I'm happy that we're able to kind of bring it back and bring that project and be ready to go out to construction this next fiscal year. The design of it is all complete. We have to look at the design, make sure we're, we have updated technology and everything with that plan, but we're, we're confident that we can get that project out. As previously said, we're, we're also going to be working on the permanent skate park. And the last project that I want to highlight is a project that's been in the works for, I don't know how many years, 12 years since I've been here, is adding a right turn lane on PCH and Tranqus. So we, we have been, been working with Caltrans. We have a design in for them and reviewing it. We're waiting for comments to that, but we're, I'm hopeful that that project will be out to construction this year. It'll be coordinated with Caltrans's bridge project to make sure we're not overlapping and causing any issues with their construction project. And, but that's going to be an added benefit for that intersection. I also want to point out Civic Center wastewater phase two project. In the, in the staff report and in the draft budget, it included that we were going to go out to construction with this project next year. It included funds for it. But based on the, the delay of the project and where we are with funding and the review at the, at the state water board level, it is very unlikely that this project will be in construction this fiscal year. We're more looking to be fiscal year '25, '26, uh, '24, '25. Yeah. So I, I plan on, I, I have a meeting with the state water board in the next couple of weeks. After that, I, I plan on giving the council a brief on where everything is on that project, funding-wise, timelines, and what we can expect from here on out. But this upcoming meeting with the state water board is very important and it'll give us clear direction on where we're going. So this last year, I want to point out a few of the accomplishments that we did last year. We completed eight capital projects within the city. We completed over 1,000 development reviews. And keep in mind that those development reviews are done by a total of probably three and a half employees. And so you can kind of do the numbers. You can kind of see how many, how many development reviews that those are being handled by, by our staff. We also issued 260 encroachment permits. Those encroachment permits were issued to various utility companies doing work in the, in the public streets or actually homeowners are actually doing work, either doing a driveway or something within the public right of way. We continue to actively and quickly respond to storms. We do a lot of prep work prior to any storm event to make sure that we don't have any damages during a storm event. That, that's a very big goal for us and that's something that we're very proud of, kind of making sure we're on top of. And lastly, this was surprised to me was we treated 21 million gallons of wastewater in Civic Center area treatment plant. So. So some of the goals and objectives that we, that we're going to look forward to kind of doing next year is working and trying to get the PCH signal synchronization projects completed with construction. Right now, we're, we're waiting for our schedule from a contractor, but hearing kind of a lot of issues with material delays for some material may affect the duration of the project. We're hoping to get it done within a year, but depending on how quickly we can get that, those, that material in is going to dictate that. This next year, we want to work on and develop a green fleet plan to develop some alternatives for fuel vehicles for the city, see how we can operate in the future, to see how we can have a really sustainable fleet. It's a combination of electric vehicles, gas vehicles, or other, other vehicles to, to fit that plan. In, in the future, California will be, will be going towards that route and we want to be ahead of that plan and have this plan in place and how we can implement it. The plan will have, have a various of funding sources and options that kind of how, how to do that. We have a series of disaster projects that are still in the books and we're going to work hard on trying to get those projects out to bid. We're working with a lot of regulations and requirements from FEMA. We're waiting to hear back from FEMA on, on some of those things and it's taken quite longer than we're expected, but we're hoping to, we can see the finish line on, on a lot of those and we're hopefully get some of those projects all done. Definitely phase two of the Civic Center wastewater, or wastewater water treatment facility project is going to be a priority and goal and still moving that forward and see what we can do to kind of, kind of get that one to a, a good location. And lastly, it's our GIS system. I want to point that out, that GIS system within our department is very useful. We use this as a very, a very active tool, a mapping tool to look at different flood zones and different assets we have in the city. One of the things we did last year was did an extensive mapping and evaluation of all of our storm drains within the city. So we've, we've included that system into our new GIS system that has a bunch of data and results for our storm drain systems and other jurisdiction storm drains. We plan on adding more data to our GIS system such as street signs, signals, other, other public works kind of things we're doing, we're going to put in there to kind of make that more, more robust. That will give us the opportunity to kind of actively manage our, our assets within the city, but also be able to provide meaningful maps to the community and to different agencies. So one of the things that we did last year was we included a very interactive map of all of our capital projects on GIS and put it on our website. And it's, it's quite, it's a, it's a nice feature and it shows all of our projects on there. So we're, we're excited to kind of further expand that, that process. Some of the changes, challenges and trends we see in this upcoming year is street maintenance expenses. You know, although we have a very, very good maintenance contractor that's very efficient and knows our city well, it's, it's the ongoing cost of labor that's increasing. Our, we have to follow state prevailing wages and those wages are constantly rising and such, and such are street maintenance expenses actually rise too. We also have an issue with our maintenance storage area. Right now, it's, the city currently rents out a, a maintenance yard for various equipment and material that we store. That, that rental has gone up significantly. And so we're, we're looking at different ideas on how we could relocate that maintenance yard to, to different locations. You know, I mentioned our GIS. We're looking to kind of implement that and expand that and work with our different departments to kind of get their needs and, and expand that to planning and, and ESD. Electronic plan checks. This was something that we started doing during, during COVID. We, we started using a electronic submittal or electronic plan check software within public works. We quickly incorporated that with planning and ESD. Where all three of us are looking into seeing how we could expand that, that program and utilize that plan check process to quickly review projects and more seamlessly kind of work between us. So far, it's, it has very good capabilities in doing it and we look forward to kind of all three of us working together to, to improve that process. As always, one of the, one of my main things that I like to try to keep really positive and get, and improve on is the communication with our partner, partner agencies, especially Caltrans, State Parks, and also Water District 29. Those, those three agencies do, do a lot of work within our city. And, and so we try to continue to try to foster that, that good communication between all of us. And lastly, I put on here storm response. It's, it is a challenge and I guess it's a trend. Hopefully we're, we're going to see more rain, but I, I think we're up to the challenge of responding to storms. We have a very good system of how we can check storms, know when they're coming, and get resources out there to make sure we have the right, the right people out there and right equipment to make sure the city's safe. So in summary, a couple of things that I want to make, let everyone know is our ongoing street maintenance. Those, the high, the higher labor cost is, is increasing, causing, causing, increasing cost of that. Mentioned that our, our four city fleets that we're, that we're actively going to be purchasing next, next fiscal year, two of them are being replaced, two are new. Our, our green street flat, green fleet plan is we want to get that rolling and implement that and kind of work with our public works commission to, to develop a nice plan with that. The continued design and construction of our capital improvement projects and disaster projects. And lastly, but most importantly is maintain our, our current level of storm response and making sure we have proper response and cities, streets are clean and, and good to go. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Rob. Council members, questions, comments? Doug?
Just a quick comment on the solar system. I think you almost need to put a plaque that says Skylar Peak was here. I think this goes back to when he was on the council. I was surprised though to see the price tag at $4 million. I thought it was a lot less when it was first proposed. And just as a question, is it going to have battery backup and, you know, why so much and what does it give us?
So, so it, it was first estimated in, I believe, 2017. And so between 2017 and now, prices have gone up significantly. And so based on construction doc or construction cost indexing that we use to kind of see how much cost can go up from certain year to certain year, that's what, that's what the change is from the time that, that original cost has been, was completed to approximately now. And that's, that's the difference between those two. Yes, it, it will have backup to it from my, from my remember right. I'll have to go back and double check to make sure. But one of the things that we want to do is have a quick look at the design to make sure that the equipment and everything that we're specifying is up to date and it's not something that's not going to work in upcoming standards and make sure we have the, the correct equipment.
Just a quick comment in the commercial real estate side of the world. They find that these solar systems only have a shorter life than you would imagine. So quality components is everything and a vendor that's still in business is essential. So, good luck.
Thank you, Doug. You're on.
On the solar project, I'm very interested in it. About two, three months ago, I went, visited Southern California Gas's project where they, instead of using battery backup, they had a hydrogen generator being run by the solar, the solar panels. And the excess power was all going into the generating hydrogen, which they were using to run an actual generator when, when they had actually needed access to the, to the electricity. I thought that was very impressive. They were, they had a setup that was sufficient to run about 50 homes and it took up the space of about two-car garage. Really interesting. So you should go see it.
Yeah, that's, that is, that is one of the reasons why I want to get a consultant to kind of look at design and look at the elements we have and make sure that we're, have the up-to-date equipment that we're expecting now, especially backup systems.
Good. Medical? Okay. Kelsey, hands?
You don't have any raised hands in Zoom.
Okay.
I do have.
Rob, a couple of quick ones. First, I mean, thank you for your, your storm response this year. You guys did a magnificent job. I mean, you know, I, I mean, you know, I don't think anybody, anybody was expecting what we got and you did a very nice job of taking care of it. When you go talk to regional water quality, I don't know if you were here, I think you were here. Did you hear Richard Soule's presentation in the public comment section of last city council meeting?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I mean, I hear that when I go through Sarah retreat a lot. So if, if, when you're talking to regional water, just mention, you know, it's been a long time. We're, we're hanging these people out to dry and I think if there's something we can do to help them out, we got to consider that. And then finally, please, please, think of some way to keep water in that damn rich pond. All right, I'm tired of chasing ducks. Thank you very, I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Mayor Protem, Councilmember Riggins has raised your hand.
Mary Ann, go ahead.
Thank you. I had a question on the permanent skate park. We've got a million dollar budgeted there. I do remember that there were some community members that possibly were willing to donate some money to that. Is that still something that's available? Or do we have any other community funding being pursued, donations and such?
Councilmember Riggins, I am working with Alicia Peak from the Parks and Recreation Commission to determine and come up with a plan for fundraising. There are interested parties who are willing to do that, to be a part of that project. So fundraising is, is on our plan and we hope to accomplish that kind of when we get the construction estimates and, and those things in order.
Thank you.
Anything else, Kelsey, for your side?
Mayor Silverstein has raised his hand.
Mayor, please.
Thank you. Yeah, just to follow up on that last point. When, back in the campaign in 2020, one of the things I was looking for us to be doing is exploring selling naming rights to various things. And a skate park would be a perfect thing to do that for. So I don't know what, whether that, whether that's included in what's being explored. And if not, if that's what the process would be for exploring whether to do that kind of thing. But I, I think we may be missing out on some opportunities. Malibu is cachet and as long as it's not an offensive use of Malibu, there might be some opportunities to make some money there.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Anybody else up here? No? All right, Rob, thank you very, very much. Do we send it back to Joe now? Is that how? Joe, goes back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Pull up the next slide. So you heard from all our departments in the overview, next steps, May 2nd, next Tuesday, we have A and F Subcommittee. We will review the general fund grant applications and the proposed budget. I apologize, the May 24th date, that's incorrect. The public hearing is May 22nd. Our next workshop for the work plan is May 24th. And then we would come back to council with the budget for adoption on June 26th. And that would be it, next slide. So with that, your recommended action for tonight, aside from questions and answers, would be to provide any additional direction on the fiscal year 23, 24 proposed budget.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we do that, are there any public comments? Is there, there was a public comment section available for? Do we have any speaker slips?
I don't have any speaker slips and I don't see anyone in Zoom with a raised hand. So you don't have any public speakers for this item.
Sergeant, would you like to just give us some comments on the proposed additional resources to keep Malibu safe, please?
Absolutely. So about a month ago, the Public Safety Commission met and I was in the, the meeting for that. And we discussed staffing for the substation. So you're going to have a service area lieutenant and a sergeant, which would be me, that you'd be paying for. And then as far as the deputy personnel go, we talked about a full-time Met Deputy, which when you have a Met Deputy, you get a mental health clinician from the Department of Mental Health along with them. They ride in the car with them. That's going to be integral to get. Just this earlier this afternoon, I don't know if you heard, but I was driving down Ventura Boulevard when I saw two individuals in the center of median of the street. One was holding a wrought iron stake arguing with the other gentleman. And as I drove by, the homeless individual with the steak speared the other one in the face with this metal stake and caused a about three to four inch gash in his cheek into his mouth. So we arrested him, but my fear is that could happen here and I don't want that to happen at all. We've seen the individual about a year and a half ago up Tuna Canyon. We've had incidents on the beach with transatlantic machetes. So these individuals have mental health issues and we need a Met Deputy deployed down here. The other good thing is though, the clinician that's assigned to Lost Hill Station now, his name's Dan Moody. He has expressed interest in becoming the Malibu clinician. So he's already familiar with a lot of the, the people down here and that would be a great transition for him to come down here and hit the ground running. The other thing we discussed was two more motor deputies. But it's looking like John Young. I'm sure you guys know John Young. He's one of the motor deputies that's been here forever. He was taken on his motorcycle about a year ago down on PCH. And it looks like he's going to hang it up and retire. So the way it works is when a department member retires, you still pay for the item. However, the department doesn't automatically give that unit the, the extra gain when somebody retires. It takes the chief to authorize it and sometimes it doesn't happen immediately. And so for motors, they're not everywhere and it takes time to get a new one in there and trained up and get the motorcycle and everything. So we had initially recommended two motors, but let's do one motor because if we do two and we can't fill it because we don't have enough motors, you'll be begging for something that we can't provide. So it looks like one motor is going to be the, the right number here and that will cover, that'll bring it up to four total and we'll be able to cover on the weekends where a lot of the traffic problems are at. The other thing we talked about were two community service assistants. They would be for parking enforcement. They come with vehicles, which is part of the contract and they'll be able to cover both sides of the week and conduct parking enforcement. The other thing I wanted to mention was I was at the ribbon cutting ceremony with the sheriff and I was with him when he toured the substation and he was blown away how nice that facility was. And he specifically said, once deputies see this facility, everyone's going to want to work here. So I want that to be the, I want that to be, everyone wants to come down here and work and make it a great place to work. And so we hit the ground running July 1st.
Thank you very much. Tell Sheriff Luna we should get a discount then. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Can I ask him a question?
Yes, I'm sorry, Paul, right ahead.
On the extra motors, are any of them going to be scheduled for the weekends?
So their schedule, we can, it's, it's not set in stone. We can modify it. And yes, the weekends are the hotspots and the motors generally work on the weekends out here. So they're just limited to, they don't do nighttime hours because of the safety. But they'll be here sunset to sunrise.
We have plenty of bad driving during daylight hours.
Yeah, so.
Okay, Paul?
Got it.
Okay, thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Just keep us in touch as we go forward with the budget in terms of, I'm sure you talked to Chris and Chris will let me know what I should be doing.
You got it.
All right, back to the council. They wanted some direction from us in terms of the budget. So who would like to go first?
I've got a few questions that I wanted to get cleared up.
Right ahead, why don't you start?
First question to Joe. You know, the, the cash management has been a key point for me and I don't think I saw anyplace in here where hopefully an extra three and a half million dollars is going to be coming in this next year. Where did you hide that, Joe?
Councilmember Stewart, we didn't hide it anywhere. I, I don't think we thought that far ahead, but we'll make note of it and see if there's a place to put that for interest earnings for the next iteration as we come back to council.
Okay.
If that's appropriate.
The council members get a fraction of the action if you find the money.
All right. You get a finder's fee.
Okay, let's see. The next thing I had a question on is the Broad Beach Geological Hazard Abatement District. I did not see in here in the funds anywhere for the cash was showing for that. Is that something that's in our budget or not for Broad Beach? That's the sand, that's the sand replacement project. Oh, here comes. Yeah, the cat. Rob's here.
Yeah, that's not, that's not in our budget. That's, that's with the, the Broad Beach Geological Hazard District's Board of Directors. It's in their, their funds.
So it's a, it's not in our, it's not in our budget process at all?
No, they, they assess and they spend that money. We don't have any connection with it.
That's the reason why I couldn't find it. All right. Let's see, just to help me out, because as you guys know, and my associate over here, Steve Uring, should be guiding me through this about how to read a, a city budget that doesn't have a P and L. And I'm trying to figure out where the profit shows up or the surplus money. And Joe, if I was to see where the money was starting to accumulate from excess income or reduced spending, is that going to be in the general fund, undesignated reserve? Or where, where does that show up? That say halfway through the year, we've got a surplus of five or six billion dollars. Where would I find it?
You're correct. And as I mentioned earlier, the, our schedules we've been using for a long time. So they definitely could use some improvement, but you'll see it in the general fund, undesignedated, the schedule of fund balances. That's where you'll see it mostly. And you can see that we're growing by about 300,000 in the undesignedated next year, which was exactly what we were referring to at the beginning, that we have a small surplus into next fiscal year of about 300,000. Now during the year, you would see those changes as we do the quarterly reports, kind of like we did this year, where we would give you new projections on how we're trending throughout the year. We would come to the council and maybe ask for adjustments to be made to either appropriate those funds or at least provide the update on where we're projecting to end.
Okay, so it's going to be the 300,000 plus the three and a half million that we found. Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, it's going to be important for us to see where those, those changes occur because I know we've got things we want to spend money on. And we had a, if you look back on the undesignedated general fund, we've had some very, call it profitable years, last few years, and hopefully that trend continues. Let's see if I have anything else. Oh, on Legacy Park, one thing I was concerned about, I realized that we're in the landlord business there and it looks like the revenue is 1.8 million versus expenditures of 2.1 million. And we've got a reserve of $700,000. By my math, that says in two years, we are out of luck. Are we getting any contingency rental income out of the, or profit participation income out of the retail space? Or what's it look like over there?
Can you say the last part again, Councilmember Stewart? What was the specific?
Well, a lot of times in retail space, and I, I think we have a land lease and a participation lease, where if the sales are above a certain amount, we get a fraction of it. Are we not seeing that or, or do we have a problem here? Is somebody not paying? It just seems like we're running a little close to the edge here. Paul, do you?
No, we are getting the, we are getting the rents. Oh, was somebody going to answer in the chamber?
I was just going to throw in that it, in the past few years, they were doing a remodel on that and there were a lot of vacancies as a result of that. But we will hopefully see the business, now that the remodel is done, we will see an increase in gross sales there, which will result in, in larger profit participations for, for the city of Malibu. Though one of the things you have to remember is that cities tend to be very, very conservative in projecting their income and, and, and very conservative as far as trying to think of every possible expense. And if it all works out, you end up with a happy surprise towards the end of the year as you see how it's developed. So that's, that's one thing I've noticed from attending a lot of city council meetings. It's always nice to, at the end of the year, go, oh, we did a little better than we thought we were going to do. So I think, I think we're probably on a path to do maybe a lot better than we thought we would do.
I agree. My last couple of years of looking at this, there's been a happy dance at the end of every year. So I appreciate that. That's all my comments for questions.
Thank you, Doug. Paul?
I, I questioned out, all right. I'm happy.
Kelsey, hands.
Councilmember Riggins has raised your hand.
Mary Ann, go ahead.
One of the things that I know I was interested in finding out about was paying off the Measure M and Measure R funds for the vacant land so that we could get control and not have to maybe provide some of the parking that's required because of those funds. I don't see anything with regards to that and I was hoping to see some way that we could get out of those obligations.
You know, my guest said that's going to probably come up as part of our work project, right? Isn't that where we would probably bring that up?
One of the things, we looked at that last year, I think, and the, it doesn't make, you know, if somebody has another use for the property, we have to pay a premium over what we got from them to, to pay that off. And it really, you know, the amount of parking that we're required to park, to have, to satisfy them is not that bad. Anything anybody, we decide to do with those lots is going to have a parking component anyway. And I think it would probably, I, I looked at it last year. I came to the conclusion it didn't make a whole lot of sense to take a bunch of cash and throw it in and then so that later on, we could do something with the property where we're going to build parking for, with that anyway. So those, those were my thoughts at the time.
Kelsey?
Mayor Silverstein has raised his hand as well.
Did Mary Ann get an answer to the question?
Somewhat, I think I'd still, if there is a, a financial report on that, I'd love to see that.
Okay. Bruce, you're up.
Yeah, thanks. I was to follow up on what Mary Ann said is I, I also would like to see that modeled. I mean, I, I wonder if we couldn't get that at least modeled in the budget as to what the budget would look like if we did use whatever money is needed to pay off those grants so that we then did have the freedom. I understand Paul would not be in favor of doing that. I may or may not be in favor of doing it once I saw the model and I don't know where the majority of the council would be. But unless we see what the model looks like, we can't even make an informed decision as to whether it makes sense.
Yeah, and to comment on that, Council, thank you, Councilmember Riggins and Mayor Silverstein. We don't, at least on hand, don't have what those numbers are. That might be a little bit more of a concerted focused effort on that to kind of diagram that out and figure out what the wishes of the council are. Maybe that's a, a separate project in and of itself, but definitely valid.
Well, wasn't suggesting that you have the answer now, but what I'm asking is the fact to be modeled into an alternative side budget.
Right.
So that when assessed the, the overall budget, we can consider whether that's something we want to pursue or not.
I agree, Mayor. When, before Elizabeth Shelverson left, her and I, she and I had a discussion on this issue because she was the one that talked to the, when the Measure R, Measure M funds came in, she knew where they were. We were talking about what the timeframe we had to, to wait before they could come to us and make us actually put the parking in. So there's a couple of issues we've got to cover and the information's there, you're right. We just got to get someone to pull it all together. Okay, any other? Doug?
Just a quick question to Joe. I assume that the property tax payment and the sales tax payments, you're going to have an update on the most recent payouts to the city. When is that going to be available so we know if there needs to be an adjustment plus or minus to your budget numbers?
Yes, Councilmember Stewart, we would be doing the Q3 report or the third quarter report of the current fiscal year. Right now, we're probably going to bring that back at the beginning of June. So in between some of these budget items. between some of these budget items for next year and then the budget hearing, you should be able to see that.
What I was really asking about is the property tax payments that were due on April 10th, for example. When are you going to get a confirmation of how much the number is going to be?
I know we recently got our remittance. Renee and I haven't discussed it or looked at it to see where we're at and tracking, but I didn't see anything that popped out that looked like we were off off trend.
Okay. I can see Renee bobbing her head. That's all I did. I I think when we do the next budget number, it'd be good to have that confirmation as all. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Paul, sorry.
On that same subject, are you saying they are actually have sent a remittance already for the for the payment that was due April the 10th? Wow. I thought that lagged several months. Yeah.
We'll bring that information back to council.
Okay, and anybody else? Kelsey, hands?
I don't see any raised hands in Zoom.
Okay. Couple of things. And and to Doug's comment, working with the budget last year in the group doing that, this is a very conservative approach in terms of the revenue side. Okay, I mean, typically, and you guys can stop me if I'm wrong, property taxes go up about 5% a year, and we don't have that 5% included. So there's yeah, there's some there's some money to be made there. You've got a lot of work ahead of you. I mean, there's a lot of pieces that are still missing from this budget. So and and when I looked at the the date that you had, I guess we're going to have the workshop on the 24th or the 22nd or something, and then you're going to have a budget meeting right after that. And then in in June, we're coming back for a final. And that that's going to be one heck of a brush. So and if we can do anything to help you, let us know, because there are, you know, you've got the study coming up from the Baker Tilly Group. I have no idea what the hell that's going to bring. So, you know, anything we anything you can do, Steve, to to push some of these people to get us that information, so these guys have time to, you know, you don't want them sitting there, you know, working 24 hours a day, three days before the the process is due to get it in. So if we can give them some lead time, you know, I've done budgets, and and I know that lead time is helpful. So anything we can do to help them out, we greatly appreciate it. All right, any other comments for this evening? No? With that silence, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very, very much. I appreciate your help. And thank you, Kelsey and Alex, for your co-piloting expertise down there. Thank you.